Can you hear us? Yeah, yes.
I can now hear you.
Okay, perfect.
I couldn't, I was like, hello?
Okay, I would like to call to order a special meeting of the Cumberland School Committee on Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022, at 5:34 PM. Per the Governor's Executive Order 22-20, this meeting shall be a hybrid meeting, in which most members of the Cumberland School Committee will attend in person, and the public shall attend in person. Per the Governor's order, masks must be worn. Remote access will be provided to ensure participation by all school committee members. And we have Carrie Feather and Paul DeMonica joining us remotely. The first item on the agenda is approval of agenda. Motion by Mrs. Rogowski.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, seven to zero. Before I hand it over to Dr. Thornton for our special budget meeting, I just want to inform everyone that I do need to leave at 6:30 tonight for a family commitment. So if we are not adjourned by 6:30, Mr. Fiorello will take over the rest of the meeting. So, thank you. All right, Dr. Thornton, Discussion of the Fiscal Year 2023 Superintendent's Recommended School Budget First Hearing.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me on Zoom? Paul and Carrie? Okay, very good. So first, to start things off, just to give you a framework of where we are, this is our first meeting of the budget process, right, tonight. Another one scheduled next week from March 10th before the regular school committee meeting. We'll then, at the committee's pleasure, schedule more meetings as we go forward near the middle and latter parts of March. As you all know, the budget goes to the Mayor's Office in early Aprils. We have this month to really, you know, have a good look at the budget and make it your budget. Right now, it's my recommended budget to you. It'll become your budget to the town. So that's the timeline for dates. Certainly, if you have questions that come up after this first night, don't wait for the next meeting to give us your questions. Please give it to us, and we'll have your answers in short order. If you have questions on something that's not in or something that's confusing, we're happy to answer it before the next meeting. To first give you some historical perspective, I want to give you just a little sense of per pupil expenditure. You've always heard of the phrase PPE, per pupil expenditure. And if you look back to 2019, Cumberland was near the bottom of the PPE. We were around $2,800 less reached child than other districts or the state average in Rhode Island. If you added that up, we were approximately around a little under $13 million under the state average for full funding for an average district in Rhode Island. Going to FY '20, which is the last year that's been public, we actually lost ground. We're now a little over $3,000 under the state average per student, and we're just shy of $15 million under the state average for funding in Cumberland. So it is sobering in that not only are we the lowest funded, we're losing ground. So that's, keep that in perspective. When we ask about funding from the community, you have to keep that in mind. We are the bottom. Second to the bottom is Barrington, just a little ahead of us, and Socket is just a little above that. But we are truly the bottom at this point. So I want you to have that in your head as you're thinking about the budget. This is a balanced budget you're seeing in front of you. And I think, you know, we'll certainly talk more about the detail. But to get there, as you've heard from last week in our joint meeting, we rely heavily on anticipated town aid, right? The maximum being the 1.8 million plus, plus some other pieces from the town we would need to achieve a balanced budget. On top of that, we must also reduce our operations by about $2.1 million and also account for fund balance. If you recall, last year, we used $1,089 of fund balance. And this year, we are modeling $725,000 of fund balance. So it's still relying on our savings account to balance. So a lot of things have to happen to balance. I know as you look at the budget, you'll probably see something you would like to have seen in the budget. I totally get that. Or maybe react to something that I have recommended you take out of the budget. I understand that. I would just say, as you think of those things, just think about, if you want to add something back in, think about the corresponding cut we have to make, or how do you want to balance that piece, if you will? Okay? What else can I tell you before I turn it over to Mr. Pignano? Hang on one second. I've got a couple of thoughts right here, Mr. P. I opened my phone. Okay. Okay. In terms of state aid, we see several sheets on state aid being circulated. And right now, I would say we're still being held harmless. And by that, I mean, the state usually has a formula they do to give you the state aid. Number of students, few days' lunch, whole, it's called a quadratic, made by Brown, and that's how they fund the schools. They're, right now, as it looks to me and Alex, suspending that still. And by that, I mean, they're holding districts harmless. Cumberland is one of the few districts actually is gaining enrollment. I think we're around 52, 56 students more than last year on average. Some districts are losing students. And holding districts harmless doesn't really mean much to us. We'd lose a couple hundred thousand if they did the formula. But some districts like Providence would lose $20 million. So it remains to be seen how many years they're going to hold districts harmless. But at some point, they have to actually activate the formula again. But that looks to be not this year. So that's something that's going to come. I do want to spend a quick thought on busing, and I'll turn it over to Alex. We know this year, we have Cumberland Hill up at the trans building. Next year, we have Garvin. In talking to the bus company, we knew they're bringing Garvin up here. They're further away. That could possibly incur a cost for the district. We did hear from the bus company today. We don't have exact numbers yet, but by moving around some of the bell times at the elementaries, 15 minutes here, 10 minutes there, we can all make it work out. But it would mean, it would come to you all for a vote to make a one-year change in some of the bell times. Maybe one year, one school at 9, another at 8:40, that kind of thing. So we do have a method to get Garvin here. It's a three-bus add, I believe, but we can do that by making some of the bell time shifts. So that's not a budget impact for you, but that's something that will come up, I'm sure, as we have the discussions. So let me turn it over to Pignano, and I'll certainly jump in. But if you could take us through first...
I thought we'd bring the schedule up. You had mentioned, you had mentioned to the committee that the $2,001,000 or the gap, the gap that we were facing, I don't know if you want to walk through them through the sheet? You want me to, whatever? We're going to put it up there.
Why don't you put it up there so we can see it?
Yep.
Can everyone see it there in front of you? So we can take you through that. So as you can see, we're kind of like... So the fund balance really is a differential between this year and last year. The $1,089 versus $725,000, that's what the fund balance is right now. That's the 4%, the actual number. We need a $1,882.256 for the town. On top of that, we would need a capital reserve from the town, which we had this year in the budget. You've heard of master leases? We would need a tech... Mr. P, do you have handouts of that?
I do, I do have this.
I'll wait while he hands that out. This is kind of like a thumbnail of what's changed in the budget. We'll give you another one next meeting of personnel, just personnel by itself. So the master lease, the ML, as we've done in the past, you would see a master lease in our budget to do some of the technology that we would need to do. Town ESAR, the town has ESAR money, just like we have ESAR money. And we lost revenue in Cumberland renting our buildings out with the pandemic. There's a provision in ESAR, we can recoup that through ESAR. So we're asking the town for the $266 to potentially recoup that lost revenue. Something you have in the budget last year called the hedge. If we were to run deficit, we have a hedge this year of $400,000. So we would ask for that hedge to be part of the calculus once again next year. So it's all these things put in from the town, that town piece. The next piece, supplies. We ran through supplies and level funded where we could. Some things did go up through contractual matters, like, say, science kits. Some things did go down. Some things were reduced or eliminated. We saved $236,000 out of supplies district-wide. Subs, we brought the sub line down. You can see the 141. We're modeling right now five retirees. That's conservative. We could have more. I think right now, we might have seven? I think I read seven today. So that's conservative. Tony's office, we do do some savings through the curriculum. Legal, we knocked it down 3,000. Math curriculum is something that we're already taking care of through other means, and we can take that out without any difficulty. High school curriculum contract, something Cumberland entered into last year. We're going to forego it. We just can't do it, so we ended that contract. We're looking at efficiencies with a one PE teacher reduction. That's something I think we can do. We're looking also at one of the high school deans going into the grant. Another move into ESAR. We need the two deans, but we put another piece in ESAR. That's what we have to do to kind of balance. We're looking at reduction of one clerical. And that should be a technology clerical, right, the IT clerical? Can you roll it up, Mike, a little bit? I won't hit all these, but we can ask questions as you go. North Cumberland Middle, you're seeing 1.2 FTEs. That goes hand in hand with enrollment. We have 2.6 positions at North Cumberland, and I can reduce those. If we make the change I'll bring to you this next month for enrollment, we have approximately 26 to 30 students that I believe are efficiency. We can go to McCourt versus go north. Right now, if we keep the numbers where they are, we potentially have kids teaching out of, adults teaching out of their area. I teach math all day. I do one section of English. Not something you want to do. So we can achieve the 1.2 savings, I believe, if we do make the shift of those students. Those students currently are in fifth grade. We have one teacher elementary BF. That's a cut I don't like to put on the board, but it is something to look at based on the numbers. I say that knowing that in the summer, enrollment could spike, and I'm back in front of you asking for a BF add. Right now, that is something mathematically that does afford itself. So that's an option for you to look at, the BF cut. Oh, thank you. So we also have one coach we have going into ESAR once again for savings, putting it, as wherever we can, we use ESAR to help us balance. And that's another example of putting something out of the operating budget into ESAR. Guidance, we'll talk more about it later, but we have a guidance shift with the middle schools. And Beth's here tonight, and Jay, they can talk about their idea around guidance. That's a shift. Preschool TAs, that's 26,000. And that's an add. Looking, this year, we know there's a common theme of we need more T support in the preschools and kindergartens. We will see in the budget this year, we want to have a one-to-one correlation between every class and get at least one PR TA. That's actually an add you're going to hear about over the next few weeks. Right now, at the high school, I'm forecasting a minimum of one, potentially two special ed teachers. Looks more like one, talking to Rachel, but I'm really looking at the numbers, trying to really make things work tighter. It is tight. Right now, I think it's one, but it could be two potentially. If the second one comes off the board, I wouldn't do something else at Garvin. Garv potentially has an add of a special ed program that we couldn't do. It's called ICAN. We have two sections now. Potentially go to a third section, if we could. So it's a choice, really. So right now, just for the budget's sake, we have a two here, but that could be a one. Breakage, you've all heard of breakage. And right now, we have a... What's our total breakage number, Mr. P?
Well, the reason that shows the other way is as influence in the problem. Whereas last year, we had a breakage under the 569. It's 430 this year, but you show that actually is a reduction of a few.
Tech, tech security, I'm on this side now. We know through the trust, our insurer, districts must do more to fight cybersecurity infiltrations. So we have a budget line of 50K for that process. That's not everything you need to do, but it's a good start. We're actually going out to bid to get companies to look at that. But right now, the trust has told districts, they may not insure districts after this year if they don't take steps to fortify your district. So we're trying to do that. The .5 preschool teacher is something we have on the books. We have, the kids are here, so that's an add we have to have. The kids are with us, so we have the teacher, and that will carry over to next year. The Garvin, is what I talked about earlier, Garvin special ed. I wouldn't be adding that if I don't get the second high school. It's kind of one-for-one. I have to look at that still. The .2 speech is something that happened this year. We're carrying forward. The kids are there, they need services. So the .2 carries forward. And once again, the guidance piece, I'll save that for Jay and for Beth, talk about the guidance model. That's a guidance shift that we're going to be looking to add. And in ESAR, if we go one-to-one, grade three, four, and five, and we have Chrome cards for K1, 2, we need another person, I believe, to really manage all these devices. So this would be potentially one tech support add to help all the devices that we're going to be having in the district. That's kind of like... Yeah. So ESAR all-in, we moved in approximately, I want to say $290,000 out of the operating budget into ESAR. So what does it do? It means this year, if we went with this budget, we obviously balanced, but we're using fund balances again. It means next year, it's harder, as some jobs expire through the grants. But in '24, '25, that's truly difficult, because now ESAR is not here. And like all districts in Rhode Island, we're going to have a real challenge trying to make ends meet. That's really the challenging year. So as tough as it is this year, next year is tougher, the third year even tougher. Last thing I would say before I give it to Alex, I think the pandemic, in talking to the mayor, he agrees, really gave Cumberland a time, time to kind of put this off. The problem was there for the pandemic. All the dollar issues were there. For the pandemic, Cumberland saved money by not running buses, things like that. Now that the pandemic's done, we're rolling again, and the same problems exist. Same structural issues. And as I told you, the PPE, we're at the bottom and going further down. So really, what I would say is, we're going to need the max amount for several years, to even have a chance to kind of climb out of this, and also try to get more state aid through getting more students in Cumberland. So Alex, why don't you take them through, what you want to take them through on the highlights?
Can we ask them questions first?
Absolutely.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, ma'am, here. Dr. Thornton, my understanding was that we could not take increasing positions into the use of ESAR funds or what happens with ESAR funds, is that correct?
So there is no supplanting rule in ESAR. Some grants have open inroads, you can't do that. And can we ask you, you can do that?
You can do that. I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's not desirable, but in trying to balance, our kind of rock in our place is, we're using fund balance again, 725, asking the town for what I outlined for you. So in order to, you know, keep some of these jobs viable, that's what we're looking to do. But yeah, we did do that in a few spots.
Okay, thank you.
Like I said, you could not do that and then keep the job and put it in fund balance. But Alex will show you the fund balance later on. It goes from the high of $6 million and goes down pretty quickly. So we're trying to find the balance between some fund balance, some ESAR, knowing that we're on borrowed time. In '24, '25, it's a very sobering year for us, but that's what we're trying to do.
Dr. Thornton, I have a question about the high school dean. That you said it's a reduction here and a cut over here, but did you say it was going into being funded by grants?
Yeah. If I run with...
It was, it was, it was a reduction in the high school dean. And on that sheet of paper where you see the guidance assistant principals, that job is in ESAR, and so it was actually a reduction for us by taking one dean out. We gave the high school an additional, the body, so they're even, the bodies. But with that new body is going into the grant. That's where, that's where it's...
So the grant's taking one over. We still have two. The grant's taking one.
So you'll have two deans and the assistant principal guidance person?
Right now, we're going to make a choice. In talking to the principal even today at the high school, it's so difficult right now. We have to make tough choices. We, as you know, we had advertised the better part of this year for the head of guidance position, and we had no luck at getting viable candidates for that job. So in talking to the principal even today, we're looking at foregoing that and going with the dean. It's just, it's that difficult. We have to choose, because we don't have the funding for all the jobs.
The budget was put together with that guidance position. I believe, so we, the high school principal has notified you, we'd rather have the dean of the two. So right now, that's not what the budget reflects, but we could make that move.
Okay, because in here...
We're there to make the movement.
Okay, because in here, I'm just trying to clarify. It says position added, high school assistant principal, climate and culture scheduler.
Right.
You're saying that is not, would be, that's not the position added?
That was the thought as we built this for you last week. As late as today, we talked to the high school principal and looking at the tough choices, and knowing that we don't have the applicants yet, and knowing that we need the deans. So it's FTE neutral, but...
But it's a dean in place of the assistant principal, and so we still don't solve the guidance problem?
No, we don't. And like I said, we could do the one dean, do the guidance, but the first step is getting applicants. And we haven't gotten them in over, I think, three or four months.
That's why it was brought up to the level of an assistant, in hopes that we would attract someone. But they may, the high school may not want to go that way.
Can you hear me now? Okay. So to your question about supplanting, usually our regular grants, which are our Title I, Title II, those grants do not allow you to supplant, okay? But these ESAR funds, they have allowed for that flexibility. So I just wanted to correct that one thing. And then the other piece is, is there is one error up there. The academic coach, we have three academic coaches in the district. It's a model that we have been trying to scale and add an academic coach at each of the buildings. That's been our goal when we started adding those jobs. And we started with the schools that we felt needed the positions the most. So that's not a pleasant one. Two of the three academic coaches are paid for through our title grants that we receive annually. We've been able to keep those away from the general budget, so they can't get, you know, cut. But the one, we run out of money in those grants, and the one position that is, or has been vulnerable in the general budget, is McCourt's academic coach. That position, it said ESAR up there, the thinking was, is, you know, could we salvage that position somehow by adding it to ESAR III? Right now, ESAR III is balanced, meaning we've had to submit a balanced 2-0 budget, and those funds have already been allocated. However, there are things that change, like curriculum quotes could come in less than what we've allocated. There are things that can happen that can allow for room in ESAR III. And I think that's why the superintendent put that up there. But it is not in ESAR III yet. It's on deck, so to speak. I just, okay?
Any other questions before we move to the next?
Okay. On the sheet that's up there now, what I try to do here is, it's kind of a summary of comparing the '22 and '23 budgets. So you can kind of see by major areas in the budget what's changed. So if you look, the first number Dr. Thornton mentioned, we're going to be looking for the 4% ask from the town. Last year, our revenues were 47056. We got the 4%. We go to 48938, it'd be the $1,882 that we talked about. The second, last year, we had some money that we did, that we did the high school security project with. The town had done a lease for us of $732,000. There was money left in that lease to reimburse ourselves last year for some of the construction that was still going on. So we had budgeted that, knowing that we were going to get that money and knowing that, you know, we needed to budget it to balance. And so we budgeted the 335. There's no lease like that in place this year. So there'll be no proceeds from leases coming into us. So that actually affects the budget in a negative way by 335,000. The next line item, this is existing master leases. These are leases that the town, that the school department has done over the last several years that the town is paying for. The total last year was 693. I don't know what it's going to be yet this year. I've just left the number the same for now. And it's on, it's, it shows as a revenue, and it shows as an expenditure in my budget. So we could put a dollar, $1 there, a zero. It's not going to affect the overall budget, being balanced or not. And when I find out what the true number is, the leases that they're paying on us, we'll adjust that. I don't know that yet, so I left it at the 693. The new master lease that we'd hoped to do, as you recall, they did a technology lease for us last year, or the year we're in right now, 518. Next year, our technology needs are less, and the new master lease would be 263,000. So it's a reduction, because that showed as a revenue, a reduction of 254,000. Now, on the expenditure side, the IT department capital items are also down by that amount. So once again, that's an in and out on both sides. The $400,000 hedge, we're hoping for that again, so no budget impact. Dr. Thornton mentioned the ESAR money. If we look back at our alphabet rentals, our pool rentals, even we rent, we rent basketball tournaments, gym tournaments, all that type of stuff. The year that, we collect about 250 a year. The year that the pandemic first hit and we closed in March, we collected like 170 of that. Last year, we only collected $70,000 in revenue. So if you take those lost revenues for those two years, it comes up to about that $260,000. And we've asked the mayor to provide that for us. He's got $10.5 million of ESAR dollars, so we've asked that he give us 266 to make up our lost revenues, which are allowed in ESAR. The next item, the town maintenance of Epic Capital, we had 300 this year. The mayor last year set up six capital reserve, and he did show, you probably don't remember, but in his presentation a couple of weeks ago, he went through a lot of his different accounts that he had, what his fund balance was. And there's a specific designated for capital, school capital, for 600,000. He hasn't given us the three yet for this year, that's in our budget, but there's six available. So we're hoping to get three this year and the balance next year. So it shows there's no change. The, I think I lost my place. State aid, the state aid is $1,218, based on, we've talked about this a number of times. It was $748,000 that there was a mistake made in the assessor's office a couple of years ago that shorted Cumberland that money. We are working, the mayor's working to try to get that money in '22, because we should have first had it this year. But in '23, the governor has included in his budget. So that's 748 is part of that. Also, Dr. Thornton mentioned the additional students. If you take those additional students times the core amount, times the way the formula runs, it'd be about another 519,000 of state aid. So it's $1,218. Now, I can, I will say that if the, if the state goes, right, you know, they're using this whole harmless theory, that's the $1,218. If they don't, our free and reduce, the number we have actually on record right now is only 600 and something kids compared to almost 900 we had in the past. And a lot of that is, I don't think people are signing up, because everyone's eligible for a lunch. There's no really reason to sign up. If they go, if they went with the 666 kids and, you know, didn't hold towns harmless, that $1,218 goes to 68,000. So that would be a significant impact. We don't think that's going to happen because of, Dr. Thornton, Providence loses $21 million. How are they going to do that, right? So we've taken the gamble that they're going to hold districts, you know, harmless. But you should know that number. The Medicaid, we left at the same number. Same with Section 125 co-pays to retiree health. That's for people who, you know, the co-pays that current employees pay towards their health care, as well as retirees buy certain benefits, dental benefits from us, and life insurance, et cetera. That's that money. Rentals, $250,000, that's what we collect normally when we, when there's not a pandemic. The CTE tuitions, now, you may want to jump in here. I haven't made any allowance for any new additional students. That's, that additional 13,000, that's what we're going to collect now with who's here.
Yeah. While you're looking at...
The budget is 712. We're going to collect about 725.
Talking to the high school today, we're looking still to go forward with adding one new program. So that's still in the pipeline. I'm not sure which one they're going to pick up, the two, Mr. Casas here. But one new program will come online hopefully, and we would have more in that line.
So how many students does this represent? The CTE?
The $13,000?
No, just the total.
Oh, the total.
How many students? It's about 60, 61, somewhere around there. I'll go for right. 60, 61?
If the new program is, if the new program is, thank you, implemented, do we know approximately how many students that would be? Do we have any idea?
I'd be guessing, conservatively, you could say five.
Five, okay.
The next, the next line item here is preschool tuitions, just level funded it at the time, for now. If you recall, last year, we had two grants. We had a testing grant for about $250,000. We spent in having people come in and do testing of students and teachers when they, if they wanted to and stuff, we spent $50,000 on that. So there was a net of about 200,000 available to us. That's not available next year. And we also had a fellowship at RIDE at the time where we budgeted this 125,000 to pay for a teacher that was at RIDE, working with a fellowship there, and they were reimbursing us. So that, that revenue is a reduction of 325 miscellaneous, there's nothing. The fund balance, educational supplies, that's 540. We originally, and the reason it showed on there as a reduction of 60 or anything, was we were hoping to do about $600,000 of purchases this year, but the pricing and what the assistant superintendent is implementing and stuff, it's about 540. So this 540, we're going to take out of fund balance. You'll see it on, we talk about fund balance later, it's there. But it's, so it'll show as an increased revenue because it was in fund balance. We'll take it in to pay for what's going to be on the expenditure side, which you'll see down below, the second line item on the expenditures. So it's an in and out. The fund balance capital, as you recall, last year, we had a couple of projects going on, the second phase of the high school security. We did the wellness center over with energy management systems and wiring and whatever. And we did 14 rooms, Mr. Fiorello, we recall, he's on the building committee. We did 14 rooms between the main high school building and this building that we thought, we didn't realize there was still asbestos flooring in them. And we thought that we had made the district completely free of asbestos flooring. We wanted to take care of those rooms. So those three projects totaled 638. We moved that money into fund balance this year. So it, you know, shows as a revenue in '22's budget. It's not going to be there in '23, there's no need for it, but it shows as a reduction of 638. And then the last item, we used 1,089 of the fund balance last year. We're talking about 725 this year. So it's a reduction of 364. So you see a net increase of 2,021,000, about 2.68%. On the expenditure side, we all know that there was, that we've been talking about this right along, that there was a two and a half percent raise for most employees and the step increases that are part of state law, you know, added 1,0520 to the budget. The 540 we just talked about with the curriculum purchases, benefits up $219,000. There are actually some benefits that are reduced because pension's up higher than that 219. And the pension is a result of small, small increase in the percentage from the state, but you've got, you've got another million five of salaries that you're paying that increase on. Transportation up 374,000 between the state contract and our, and our contract with Durham, the increase in the contract with Durham next year. Charter vocational schools, the charters are up about 98,000, but the vocational schools are down somewhat. I put them together, it's a net of about 44,000. Charter's 90-something thousand up, the vocational school's about 50,000 down, and that's about 44,000. Facilities capital, last year, that, this, the regular $200,000 that's there for repairs last year, as well as that 638. Next year, the 638 is gone, those projects are done, we're paid for. And there's $300,000 in the budget for capital, which kind of matches the capital number that we're hoping to get from the mayor. The middle school math curriculum, they're implementing a new math program, and so the $42,000 of curriculum that we buy won't be needed. It's not part of the new curriculum that they're implementing. I've worked with the assistant superintendent, he's given me that information. Last year, when we did the ICSI contract, rather than go and try to adjust every person in the budget for their salary increases and stuff, we knew what the overall fiscal note was going to cost and I parked that money in the HR budget, knowing that some of the other budgets would overspend a little bit, but I'd have that 97,000 in HR that was absorbing that. Well, next year, those salaries now are correct with what they're making and stuff, so the 97's not needed in the HR budget. Shows as a reduction. Salary breakage, I talked a little bit about, we used 554 last year, which is probably the highest number we've ever used. It's down to 430. We put 430 in there. And in that 430 is the estimate of those five retirees. So we were using three and we've added another 130 to it for those retirees. So those people retire during the year and we hire someone, hopefully at a less step, we won't be able to take those savings in the budget they're already accounted for. And then everything else in the budget, all the items, you know, psychologists, physical therapists, special educator, all the different positions, the business office, technology, everything, everything added up, there's a $125,000 net reduction in all those type of line items. So you see the same 2,021 on the expenditure side.
Mr. Brigano, can you explain, it's the small line item under revenue, but can you explain the reduction and what falls under miscellaneous?
I didn't.
Miscellaneous.
Oh, the miscellaneous, it was, it was 14,000 change last year. I've just put, I think we've collected 560 bucks so far this year. It's just a number, you know, that sometimes we'll, we will collect money, you know, we've sold, we've sold copies in the past, or sometimes we'll get a rebate check on something. It's just, it's just small revenue in there to help, basically to help just balance the budget. Any other questions on any of those line items? But I think, hopefully that gives you kind of an idea. These are the big broad items in the budget and you can see which ones have moved up and down. And hopefully I explained a little bit on why some of them have either moved up or down. Most of them have moved down because things like leases and stuff or capital projects or fund balance that we use is no longer there or needed because the project was complete or whatever. No other questions on that?
I do have another question. Under rentals, how did you come to the 25,000 increase in rentals? Is that?
Maybe we have questions too, we should check. Could you repeat that, Dennis?
So under rentals, you show a $25,000 anticipated increase in revenue. Is that based on past history? Is that based, is that just a guesstimate? Is it?
Well, what I did is when, in calculating what I was going to ask for, for the town in ESA revenues.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm talking on the rentals.
You're looking at the rental income?
Yeah.
Yeah, I looked at what we had collected over the last couple of years, what we lost. And it was about $260,000 that we lost. So I brought that rental. If I'm going to ask for 266, I didn't want to be asking, show a budget of far less than that and have someone say, why ask it for 266 if you only, you know, need, you only collect 200 or whatever. But the calculation over 18 and 19, and 19 and 20, and 20, those two years, showed about a net $260,000 loss from what we would have collected. So I just brought that up to the 250.
But we can stand, that number could go up based on COVID restrictions being lifted. We could be, our facilities could be utilized by members of the community, correct? Okay.
All other questions? Did he go?
It's on his bike.
Didn't Paul have a question? Okay.
When he comes back on, we can, we'll ask him.
Okay, Mr. D'Monica, do you have a question?
I wish. All right, so I had a few questions. If you can hear me fine, can you hear me okay? Yes, no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So let's go back to the guidance position at the high school. Why not fund that as a stipend? Yes, I'm talking, aren't I? I wish. All right, so I have a few questions.
There's a delay on that, Paul, from you two.
So I'm just, you know, all right, so department chair, guidance.
Also, you're saying, I think, Paul, rather than have a full FTE, could we have a stipend position for a head of guidance amongst the current guidance counselors? Is that the question?
So that was the first one, the first question I had.
I think the answer to the first one is, we could look at that. Budget-wise, that's not an insurmountable number, we could look at that.
Alex, have you talked to the mayor at all about the master leases, about trying to do some more next year?
Doing more than the 260 something? Yeah, well, we don't really have, we, our technology number was 260 something this year. We have some money in the ESA grant as well earmarked for Cromes. We were trying to, you know, because of all the other things we're asking for, from the town, to show some type of lessening of lease dependency on them, you know? I mean, it may be, it may be the mayor might say, gee, let's do more of a lease and less of something else. This is, this is just our best look. And we have had some discussions with him. He hasn't like said, are you guys crazy? Or he hasn't said anything like that to us, so.
Okay, I guess this one would be for Dr. Thornton. Amy had talked about how many students, you know, would be in this new CTE program, and you estimated maybe it'd be five. Does it really cost effective for us to add another CTE program with only five kids?
When I say five, I mean five out of district as revenue. We'd have kids in Cumberland taking it, but I'm guestimating five out of districts. We still have a good complement of kids in Cumberland. We have a lot of course offerings, but a lot of kids. So filling that course with Cumberland kids won't be a problem. It's the revenue. And Mr. Costa, if you want to add to that, feel free. Hang on, Mr. D'Monica, the principal of the high school is coming up to add a few thoughts on that.
Yeah, sure. So, right, that's, we are, we are currently, we are currently, we are currently applying for the CTE pathway through RIDE, but we, that's currently an ongoing program. And we have a full course of students, full class of students in there. Until it's approved as a RIDE pathway, though, that's when the revenue kicks in. So that has been going on. And actually, you can only apply for a RIDE pathway after the program being in place for three years. So this is, it's not brand new, it's been in place, we're just applying for the pathway now.
Mr. Collins?
Dr. Thornton, this could be, you may not be the one answering this, but obviously, when you look at the positions added, there's no mental health positions in there. So this is not an indictment on your budget or anything like that, this is strictly financial. When we have a mental health episode that we can't address at the, at the school level, we have to outsource, correct? Sure. We should have like a Phil Dunne here walking around with a microphone.
Lou? Okay, so I think that what I heard your question to be is if there's a student that has significant behavioral and mental health issues, then we might have to look at an out-of-district placement.
An out-of-district placement or even some sort of assessment done or a crisis situation done at the school level?
Oh, yeah, we do those consistently and constantly. Every day, we're doing risk assessments throughout the district. Those are done by our school psychologists and social workers. We'll do a risk assessment. If there's something that's more concerning involving weapons or significant drugs or something like that, then we do hire some to do what's called a forensic risk assessment. Those are not, those are few and far between, you don't do too many of those per year.
My question is, so if we're not going to be adding positions for mental health under this preliminary budget, shouldn't there be an expenditure line item at an anticipated cost increase based on what we're seeing across the board in the school districts?
So the evaluations are in my, under my budget. And we do, we budget for all the evaluations in the district because even if they're not already in special education, sometimes they're being evaluated to see if they're in special education. So those are in my budget. And I also am adding extra into the IDA, our ARP funds to cover extra evaluations. Because yes, we have blown our evaluation time budget line item through the roof. And it's not just the mental health, it's also the preschool students coming in have not had access to early intervention. Five of the early intervention agencies shut down. And places like the CNDC, who usually have like an eight-month waiting period, also shut down over, over COVID. So they're about a year and a half backed up. What that means for us is that kids are coming in with absolutely no services and no evaluations. And we always do some part of an evaluation, but now we have to do complete and full, including more clinicals at that level because of the high level of students with autism spectrum disorders coming in. And we don't diagnose that at the district level. We have to get a clinical evaluation, much to look at that. So we've had to create a pretty efficient way to work with our own school psychologists as well as our outside and consulting clinicians to complete that. But it has blown our budget item.
So you've blown the budget this year? So have, have there been, have there been provisions made in next year's budget? So we've blown through it this year, I would anticipate, I think.
Yeah, as I said, I'm adding extra money into, I'm getting, it's not ESAR funds, it's called IDA ARP funds. I do have a little extra money coming that way, which I would prefer to put into services rather than people since it only lasts a year and a half and I don't want to cut people. So that would pay for the additional services.
Thank you.
Yep.
And didn't we add some mental health physicians through the ESAR funds?
We added an additional school psychologist, which has allowed community, which is a very large school, to have a full-time school psychologist. And then we have another school psychologist that is splitting Garvin as well as the preschool. Again, the preschool being very high, we knew this was happening, so I planned for that last year. So he does Garvin and the Garvin preschool, there's one classroom over there, as well as the entire preschool. And then we have a .6 at BF Norton and then one is shared between Cumberland Hill and Ashton. So total in the district, we have 6.6 school psychologists and three social workers for 46 and change students. How many, what is the breakdown at the high school? In terms of psychologists or? One school psychologist, one social worker. Okay, and is that a normal number? No. Or, okay. No, since I've come to this district, I've advocated every single year to increase in mental health. I've come to this, this team multiple times requesting additional mental health. I was able to add one school social worker. At one point, all the social workers were cut, we were able to get them back, I was able to add a social worker. But I would say we're woefully underfunded in that area. No, that's no fault of not supportive, people would like to do that, but the budget does not support the, any additions. In fact, the budget supports cutting from what you currently have, it does not support addition. And until, frankly, I'm, I'm getting mad, actually, as I'm sitting here, sorry. And unfortunately, until this community decides that they're going to adequately fund or the state decides to adequately fund schools, this is the way we're going to be. We're sitting here with a choice. I'm sitting here with a choice of either, I have an ICAN, like for special ed services, I have to cut a special ed program at the high school in order to get a kindergarten early childhood program coming up of kids that are currently here, that are severely profoundly autistic with nonverbal. So that's not a choice. There is no choices here, it's, it's stealing from us to get to that. And I have no problem being creative, I have no problem switching around programming. All of you who've been here have known that. I will not just ask for another teacher, I look to see, can I, can I close a program? Can I compile a program? Can I move a person? I move FTEs every single year in order to meet the needs of kids. But we're getting to the point where it's not enough. And that, and that's the reality. And I'm mad because the kids deserve better. And this community and the state need to do a better job. That's it.
Chair, I think, if I could take a moment and call up Ms. Dunkinson, Ms. Coughlin and Dr. Masterson, I think we can answer one of the questions you often have as committees, I think. In terms of the personnel, what are the big changes in personnel? The pluses, the minuses, right? And we have one sheet, we can kind of have Katie go through with you. And essentially, I think you have it in your plate, it's not that sheet, that's for later, that's fund balance, but.
It's a small, little, little spreadsheet with just personnel.
Yeah, but. You had it in your packet from the shab.
Yeah, that's it.
Yes, that's it. So I would say that is always subject to maybe some fine tuning, but that's what it looks like. And if you see on top, we're essentially staffing-wise, you know, seven and a half jobs coming offline, six and a half jobs coming online, there's only a net reduction of one. There's only a net reduction of one. I have the middle school principals up there because one of the big conversations I think tonight I want you to hear is just the thinking going forward at the middle level around guidance and dean, dean in terms of middle school. So, Kate, if you could take them through the sheet, and then I want to have both principals just tell them their thinking on their, their plan going forward.
Sure, before I get too far into the sheet, I just want to clarify that this sheet is not, there are more granular changes that like a third grade to a fourth grade or something like that. None of that is included in there. Only those changes that have budgetary impacts on the final numbers are really included in there. So, there will be, I don't want anybody to leave this meeting and then say, in June, when something's posted to the matrix or posted on School Spurring or something, that I'm filling something that wasn't included in this. Those are more of the granular changes that hundreds of them happen every year. So, to go through the positions added and then positions cut, ultimately, you can see, we've talked about a lot of them in the, in the, um... in the presentation so far. All in all, the general fund impact for the adds and the cuts are around $350,000. And then we also move around $290,000 into grants. So, which is delaying the problem. We understand that. But it is, it is a short-term fund. So, with regard to the middle school, there is the proposal to, to reinstate a 2.0 guidance position at McCourt, and then move to a 1.0 at North Cumberland with the addition of the dean there. And that is reflective of the mental health and student needs, staffing needs at those schools. Both are here to discuss that.
So, I can begin, since the shift is, the shift in the, our thinking around building a student support team at North Cumberland Middle School, we are, we are changing that slightly. We are not looking to reduce mental health support. We're actually looking to reallocate and reassign job roles so that we're able to accommodate the volume where we see the volume of student support is needed. And for us, it's really at a tier-two level. The assistant principal at this time manages our tier-two students in terms of behavioral supports that are needed, works very closely with Jim Field, who's our behavior specialist. What would typically in a year be 10, a group of 10 students that the assistant principal would support on an ongoing basis in terms of working with the students, working with the staff, and working with the, the families, has now grown to be approximately 30 students that she is working with on a continuous basis. That becomes a full-time position, and one that we want to evolve to be more targeted and more supportive and more proactive in its approach. So, the dean, as it's called a dean, we're not picturing it as a typical middle school dean position, but more a member of our student support team that will assist with the other members of the school support team, that being the school counselor, whose primary functions are dealing with students in crisis among other school counseling responsibilities, the school psychologist, the, the social worker, and the dean of student culture, as well as our school nurse. So, that rounds out the student support team. Certainly, both myself and the assistant principal are part of that as well, but they're really managing the day-to-day operations of supporting students on a regular basis. You know, when it, so, so basically, that's the idea around building the support team, moving the position, reallocating job responsibilities so that we have a school counselor who's supporting on a, on a particular level. And then we also have a dean of student culture who's supporting students in a very proactive outreach type of, type of process, really moving away from students coming to us in terms of, and moving toward outreach and really addressing that tier-two, and that, building relationships and making connections. That's the need at North Cumberland Middle School right now that we feel based on everything that we have, you know, just the, what we've gone through over the last two years and what we see as a consequence of that this year. So, we feel that's the best approach to take the limited resources that we have and really build a strong student support team that is focused on students' mental health.
Great, whereas the needs at McCourt, I mean, Dr. Masterson can explain those, maybe, are a little different.
Evening, everyone. When we look at our school, I've been the principal there for 10 years, so I have a pretty long view of the needs of our school. And every year, they seem to be growing. But at the same time, they've, our students force us to get better every single year. When we look at school counseling, it's the one group of people that I really lean on every single day, to not only plan for their day, to be proactive at a tier-one level within classrooms, and teaching skills that our students need to exhibit as a middle-level student. Every 12- to 14-year-old makes a bad decision. But we need to make sure that they can then think before that decision takes place, whether it's, you know, dealing with student conflict, working on the bullying harassment policy, which is a big part of what we do every single day to make sure that all students feel comfortable coming to school, but also how to access help when needed, and also to support groups of students who are dealing with gender identity or other situations like that. So, we want to be able to plan on a daily basis, what students do we need to see, what classrooms do we go into, what are we teaching? On top of those planning situations, we have the unplanned scenarios that take place almost immediately when students come into school. They need to talk to a school counselor. And that can range from a 10-minute conversation or turn into a one-hour investigation. And that student cannot learn until those needs are met. And then what we do have, similar to what Mrs. Coughlin was referring to, we have our student support team, which we work at a tier level so that everyone's role is very clear. School counselors are tier-one, and our school social workers and school psychologists is tier-two. And then we're, also have availability at McCourt, thank you to the advocacy and planning of Dr. Santa's office. We have clinical psychologists and their team available as well at a tier-three level. And then what, Dr. Thornton had sent me out for a school safety training a couple of weeks ago. And one of the things that we're starting tomorrow is a daily briefing. So, every day at 8:15, our team is going to meet to talk about our day, to make sure we have our plan set, what students we need to talk about. Because what we're finding is that there are three or four adults working with the same student throughout the day. So, we're going to have a more coordinated approach to working with our students as we go into trimester three for the last 60 days of the school year. And that's going to be able to help build our plan to start with day one next year in the event that we're lucky enough to have this budget approved so that we can come back to full strength.
And Madam Chair, I would just add, what you're hearing about, what I would call is site-based management. And, you know, each school is using their resources to the best of their ability. It may not be the same, and that's okay. It's based on the needs of the building. That's why I support the differentiation between the two. We can certainly talk about personnel and all the changes, but we wanted to give you the first kind of taste of it on that sheet, if you will. And those, like I said, are the major shifts as we identified them. As Katie did mention, we can have some more granularity as we go forward in the spring, right? Making a grade three, a grade two, that kind of thing.
Not all-inclusive of every single granular movement, but the big, the bigger ones and the ones that have a fiscal impact are included on here.
So, Madam Chair, if we could now pivot, we would pivot to one of your favorite topics. I know it's a fun balance.
And just for the record, I am, I'll be leaving the meeting now and handing over the meeting to Vice Chairman, Mr. Fiorello. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Before you go, Madam Chairwoman, usually I walk people through the budget where they can find certain line, certain, you know, the bigger line items or different things that you might have an interest in. Because of time constraints tonight, I'm going to save this till the next time we get together. And we'll just talk a couple of minutes about fun balance.
And I think that's a good idea because many of us have not really gone through the budget yet. And we'd like to be able to read the budget before we start really delving into it.
I know sometimes I pointed out so that when you go to an item, you've heard me talk about it, and you might know what it is. But as you go through it, anyone have any questions on it? Just shoot me an email, and I'll answer you, and I'll copy all the members. Because if you have a question, maybe other members on the committee have the same question. So, anyhow.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brignano, as always, you are available for in-person meetings with any member of the school committee.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm here every day, so. I just hand out this fun balance sheet because I want to point out Cumberland is, Cumberland has some serious budget issues that we're facing. And we would have been facing this earlier, but the pandemic, as horrible as the pandemic was, actually gave Cumberland a couple of years of life. Because the first year the pandemic hit us, we saved about $2 million in the budget for items we didn't spend. We saved significant money in transportation, utilities, on and on and on. And so, that, that, and you can see it in the 20 budget that I handed out, right down at the bottom, that $6,307 includes $2,545,49 of a surplus we ran that year because we didn't spend money. Supply line items that we would normally spend the second half of the year didn't get spent. And it basically has given Cumberland some life. So, you saw how the fun balance ballooned from 3.8 to 6.3. So, now, at the end of '21, we're going to use about 5.22 of that fun balance. We're going to be somewhere in the 5.9 to 6.2 million area when the audit finishes. And you can see the items we're budgeting, the $1,089 this year. We reserve the $700,000. We bumped it to seven and a quarter. In '22, there's only, the only money left is the $2,897. And you're going to be facing a budget growth of about $4 million. There's 2.5% raises in for everyone again next year, the contracts, the two-year contracts. And to be honest with you, you know, the, you know, 2, 5% over three years, you know, for raises was acceptable. I mean, you can't never pay anyone anything either. And so, what we do, and believe me, Bob Mitchell got it, Phil gets it, Tony gets it, I'm always there saying, are you sure we can maintain this if you want to go forward with such an item? We talk about it with Chromebooks, which Dr. Thornton has said is a must. We're like the only district that don't have Chromebooks at the elementary schools, the one-to-one devices. And, and other items that are in this budget. You could tell that the fact that we don't have what Mr. Collins thinks is adequate, mental health, we have, we don't have a lot of excess positions here. And that's because we don't have the ability to maintain it. When, when this ESSA money goes, you've got about 20 positions in there that we will, the goal was to put three of them on this year. Remember, three, three, and three? So, the ones that Tony really felt he needed? Well, those three aren't in here because we couldn't get them in. We've got a significant problem here. We'll go through this budget further. Maybe, you know, some of you people have some ideas of what, of some solutions or whatever. I've been, I've been saying this, and I felt like, you know, like Pollyanna, you know, constantly saying the sky, you know, Chicken Little, the sky's falling. But the ESSA gave us those extra two years. The sky is falling. The sky has fallen. If you remember the five-year plan I gave you recently, the last year, the five-year plan showed about a 9, $10 million gap. Well, if you were to get $1,008,000 from the town all in the next four years, 4% each and every year, that doesn't cover that gap. So, we've got some problems here that we have to really, and these, these people get it, believe me. You've got people who get it. They're very careful with anything they do. But, so I just wanted to show you that fun balance. Any questions on any items on the fun balance, I'm happy to handle them and ask you. You know, a lot of them are, like you see the 6.38 on that sheet. That's the money we took in this year for those projects. You see, we put some money in for the technology cyber work we have to do. And, you know, I'm trying to reserve a few bucks for special ed because Rachel felt she should go to $1,350,000 in tuitions next year.
Million drifty.
Yeah, $1,350,000, but we left it at $1,250,000. So, I've got $50,000 here in reserve in case we need it. Hopefully, we won't, we won't need it, but, so. I just, I just felt that, you know, we're starting this budget session. It's important to get this out. So, as far as going through this, especially with the chairwoman having a commitment, I think Mr. Fiorello might have a commitment later on or whatever. Like I said, go through it. Any questions, feel free to come see me, email me, whatever. And I'll take everyone through it page by page. Just hit the highlights. I've done that the last couple of years because we've had some new members come on, and I thought it was helpful for them to be able to know where certain things are budgeted and how much we budget for them. But, you know, we won't take more than 15, 20 minutes to do that, but I think it'd be rushed tonight if there are questions or stuff. I'll do it Thursday.
Mr. Fiorello, how much do you think we spend? Would you know offhand, one of the expenses we have is unfunded state mandates? I mean, Mr. Brignano. Either one of you, feel free to answer. Mr. Brignano, how much, how much do you think we spend every year in unfunded state mandates?
Actually, I was asked that in my previous job. That's a tricky question. The whole BEP essentially is something we have to do. So, we tried to add that up once. It's almost like what is not in the BEP? Almost everything you do is required. So, there's not a lot of wiggle, but I know there's some big-ticket items like busing. Busing in our state to the north, you can charge for busing. If we charge a dollar a day and 2/3 of our kids rode the bus, that's around $350,000 in revenue we could generate. That's an unfunded mandate. That's an old law in the books. You can't charge for busing in Rhode Island. That's what one people think of. But there are other things, like Rhode Island's one of the few states to have bus monitors on a lot of the buses. A lot of states don't, and they don't have any appreciable higher, you know, incidence of accidents, but that's, that's a mandate, right? But as far as the BEP, you know, whether it's, you know, ELA, math, arts, sciences, that's all something we have to do. But it's tricky when they, you want to get a list. It's almost looking at the budget and finding out what's not mandated in the budget.
I mean, some of the stuff, you know, you'd have to provide busing. But I, you know, when I look at, when I hear the news, you, you watch what's happening down in Providence, and they say, we're going to, we're going to make this a graduation requirement. Or we're going to, we want, in the case of, fortunately, ESSA covered a lot of the curriculum stuff. But it's like, yes, we want to raise this, so we're going to, we're going to require every district to adapt this curriculum, but they don't fund it. In the case of, you know, it was a wonderful idea, let high school kids go to community college. The money dried up. So, these things keep adding up, and I think, you know, we're stuck with the bill. I mean, BVP is obviously the most startling, why don't we, $4 million or whatever we spend every year? So, I mean, if there's anything in there, like we could, you know, people can, you know, you can talk to the people at the State House and like, do we really need? Please stop adding stuff, because I worry. You talk about the budget gaps down the road, but I'm, I just immediately started thinking, you know, we're looking at a budget gap in a couple of years, but it could be higher if all of a sudden politicians want to, you know, get the name of the paper some more. So, it's, it's unfortunate. I do have one other question.
I have one thoughtful other question.
Okay, fair enough.
In terms of the ad, and you're right, a lot of times, I think, well-intended folks at the Capitol will want to add, everyone must take Class X before you graduate, and Class Y. And the high school principal will, you know, have fits because every time you do that, you're restricting the schedule on what kids can take. But we keep getting more requests from the State House to add more things kids should take before they graduate. At the rate it's going, we'll have very little choice for kids as they pick classes. But, you know, to your point, so whenever that does, an ad gets put in place, that's something else we have to budget for. So, I just want to get that for your last question.
I do, this is more of a rhetorical question. So, this is based on 4%. What happens if we don't get the 4% from the town?
So, come this spring, say you pass the budget by end of the month, April, right, goes to the mayor. Let's say the mayor puts it forward at 4%, it goes to the council. Now, we're late May, early June, and we get half of what we, we need. Then we're back in front of you with a list of reductions we have to reduce. And to be honest, it's always in the staffing because we cut the supplies already, right? You could do things like busing. You could increase the walking zone to two miles, you know, et cetera, and just reduce busing. Busing's around $4 million all in. You can make it $3 million. And make a log, a non-bus, a non-walking zone or a non-transportation zone. But they're all tough choices because we're the lowest-funded in Rhode Island, so there's not a lot of places to go. But we have to balance by law, so we have to give you a balanced budget. Or you could put it all in fun balance and go $1,006,000 in fun balance, and then you're on borrowed time. It's compounding the problem, right?
Yeah, to that, to Mr. Collins' point, the thing that really drives me crazy, of course, other than a parallel school district in our town, is the dual enrollment. Good idea at the very beginning, dual enrollment, let kids take some college classes. But then the legislature turned around and gave the first, what, two years of state colleges for free, or community college for free. There's no reason to have dual enrollment still in place. It's just another burden on local school districts. And quite honestly, the state legislature just doesn't care. It's a horrible idea, and they don't care because they don't want to take it up. Right. Where, where it's already free. So, I'm sorry, Dr. Thornton, please. Anyone else have any questions? No?
I think that's all I have for tonight. Just, this is your first kind of look at the budget. Now that you'll... the budget, now that you'll, you'll, I'll get into it, talk to us, call us up, ask questions, we'll come on the 10th at 5:30, right, our second go-around of the budget, and going into the detail in the supplement, and then we'll schedule, you know, certainly the third, the fourth meetings, as many as you need to kind of have a good sense of the budget.
Yeah, and the other point is, also to Mr. Collins' point about, you know, it all hinges on what the town gives us, is, I mean, Mr. Dymonic, I'm sorry, Mr. Dymonic and I have done this for, quite honestly, too long, this part of the budget process doesn't really, really matter, in a, in a, in a way, because we can ask, you know, we, we fill out, you know, our budget request, until the town tells us what we have for money, we really don't know what we can add, what we can subtract. I like to keep a running list within my printed budget of what I want to do, or what I'd like to move around, but until we know what the town is giving us, it's really meaningless at that point. So, hopefully, the town is listening, hopefully they're, I do have one question for the two of you, is, has the town talked to you about the upcoming levy in, is that March or April?
I think it's April, the fir, the next levy.
We've talked, we've talked about it, we've talked about it, the mayor's well aware of what we're looking for in this budget, well aware.
Has there been any discussion, because I know, you know, in previous years, we've talked about increasing the levy in April, depending on how things are going, to try to give us a little extra, and then be able to increase our 4% ask in the following fiscal year. Has there been any discussions about that, about what they may actually do with the levy?
He's got some, he's got some issues that he talked, he talked about, I mean, when I say he's well aware, it sounded like, you know, oh, you know, like I was saying, oh, he knows what he, what they have to do. No, the mayor's well aware, and he's also been very supportive in our meetings with them, so it hasn't been like he said, you know, he's pushed back on anything. He doesn't know exactly where his budget's going to be, though, yet, and he's got a couple of, and we've crafted some ideas that could help him, he's got reval next year, $600,000 one-time expense for him, and so we've talked about some ways to somehow, with, you know, some things we could do that could bring in some money, that would help him pay that off and stuff, so we've got a, a number of things going on, but the bottom line is, you know, we're still, we, we need to get all of the items that are, that we listed, or, you know, we'll have to make reductions in the budget.
Yeah, and just so, I mean, folks on the town side understand, as much as we say we need more money, we do know that there's a limited amount of money that can be generated, and the simple fact is, anyone that lives in this town knows, the town is short in other areas as well, it's not just that the schools are underfunded, it's that a lot of other town departments are underfunded as well, and hopefully, the town will be able to come up with a long-term plan to solve all of these issues, or at least move things along.
The problems with the way schools are funded in Rhode Island, they're either go on the back of the taxpayers, the town appropriation, or a state aid, and how many districts in Rhode Island where the population is being reduced, in all honesty, yet many young people move out of Rhode Island for jobs, so they don't have children coming into the schools, you know, you look at the, you look at the state aid numbers, almost every district is down next year because they've lost children, and then the capacity of the builders, even if you had hundreds of people who wanted to come to Cumberland, you couldn't, you, there's not the room for them. So, state aid is very limited, you know, we're getting that 748 that was through the, you know, that we got, but if not, we would have had $500,000 this year, which is, that's a big number. Not many people, not many districts people, not many districts saw that type of increase. Most years, you're going to see, you know, an increase between, you know, 300 and a reduction of a couple, you know, it's in that sweet spot, it's not, it's not the savior. So, the only thing left is town appropriation, it's, the way, the way it's funded, and all the mandates and stuff that are out there are just, I mean, give you an example, we're going to spend $1,200,000 in the next couple of years on curriculum. Well, Massachusetts did that, and if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, but districts that were succeeding, they didn't make them buy the curriculum if they were doing well. Rhode Island, whether you succeed or not, you're going to buy the curriculum, you know.
Which would, yeah, which makes us have to reinvent the wheel, so.
$1,200,000 is a lot of money that we're going to have to come up in the next two years.
Well, I have to say that Cumberland is very lucky to have the central administration team that we do have, because you are all excellent at your jobs, and, I mean, there's a lot of thought put into this budget with, you can only do so much with so many dollars, so, thank you. Dr. Thornton, do you have anything else for us?
No, I think we have public comment on the schedule.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure that nobody else on the committee has a question, Mrs. Rogalski.
Going back really quick to the state aid question, and the hold harmless, should they decide, because they are also suffering budget issues, when would that happen? When would we know that?
That's a question we ask all the time, we call RIDE all the time, they send out revised sheets, spreadsheets of all the districts and all the allocations, but every indication right now is, we're being held harmless in my meetings with superintendents, like I said, if they don't, only a couple districts are on the plus side, where one of them would, you know, be reduced, but some districts would be just decimated, so I don't think districts could open if they didn't hold districts harmless right now.
There is a potential that, and $1,000 from the number we're on, based on charter school attendance, in the past, the General Assembly hasn't made an allowance for waiving that, and so, I don't think the child, I don't think we're going to lose a number of kids that they say we might, because we've kind of held our own the last few years, but that, they look at that number in March, and if those kids are registered, that's what the state aid will be budgeted at, so I'm in touch with the RIDE people and keeping a track of that number, but it could be $121,000, which is a, you know, I mean, a sizable number, but we went with the $1,218,000 right now that we would be held harmless, but it's, but it's important to keep in mind.
Could there be a push to get the information from students and from families to register, so that we do have an idea of a number, even if we say we realize that now it's not needed because of the free lunch programs, and, but just so, for the future, just so we can kind of, I mean, we know where we were, but would it be possible to kind of gather that so that we know what's coming down the pipe?
The challenge is, it's really what RIDE gathers, right, there's data pulls every day from our system, it's what they pull, it's not what parents report, so it's, they're data pulls from their system, that's what they base all this, all this on.
And just to follow up, I want to echo what Mr. Fiorello said, like, I am amazed with what you all do, and how you do rearrange and reallocate constantly, and it's just, it's, it's extremely frustrating, because I think for so long, Cumberland has succeeded so well, I don't even know if that makes sense grammatically, but they have just blown away expectations, doing so much with so little, and I think a lot of that, most of that comes down to the people in this room, the principals, the administrative team, central office, and I think that the town sees it as you've done so well for so long, why change anything, but we're running out of things to do well with, and it's, there's going to be a breaking point, and I think that's what Mr. Pignano, like, we're looking at something, and my concern is, in the joint meeting, it almost seemed as if the mayor was kind of giving us a little warning of, I have a lot of expenses, you're probably not going to get your 4%, so I'll be really curious to see what happens there, and I'm hoping that they are listening, and they are going to give us a full 4%, but we just don't know, and it's, it is like Mr. Fiorello said, it's frustrating to, at this point, to do all of this, because you don't know what you're going to be working with, but just, you amaze me with what you do, and how well you do it, and I think everyone needs to know that it, there's a breaking point coming.
I think it's also important to mention, we can't even, we can't even address, like most school districts, we can't even address the sheer amount of dollars that our teachers and other staff members put into their classrooms, for the, for the children in their classrooms, for supplies and everything else that, you know, quite honestly, we just, we'd never be able to fund everything, so. I just want to make sure that Mr. Dymonica or Mrs. Feather does not have any questions or comments that they'd like to make. I see Mrs. Feather, I believe, came on, and then Mr. Dymonica.
I just, I have to thank you very quickly, but I just want to, I just want to, I want to, um, thank you so much, and also thank Pignano as well for warning us about what's coming, very, I'm quite, I'm quite astonished by everything that, and all the success that we, that the leaders here have been able to achieve, and thank you to everybody who I know is over there, that I can't quite see, but thank you to everyone who has spoken about doing more with less, and I hope that this is the time that we can actually start to, yeah, start to fund our students appropriately, so, thank you for everyone for doing this work.
Thank you, Mr. Dymonica?
I would just like to say to everyone that, you know, when the, when we start the budget process with the town, the school committee is always not in the, we're not given a fierce shake when it comes to the budget. When the mayor handed out that sheet a couple of weeks ago at the joint council meeting, you know, he had expenses in there for payroll, he had expenses, expenditures in there for pension, medical, things like that, utilities that go, you know, we, we still have the same expenses that he may have, but our numbers never get included in his sheet, you know, whether it be this mayor or previous mayors, you know, our numbers are not there, so if the mayor says he needs an extra $600,000 for pension on the town side, well, what about the school side? We don't have a control over that number, and, you know, our pension costs could be $800,000 more for the year, or, you know, we can't control BVP, but the state tells us how much we have to take out of our budget to give to them, you know, same goes for the utilities, we've cut back, we've cut back the best we can, yet, you know, when it comes to utilities, our numbers aren't included in what the projected number could be for the next year. You know, we're behind the eight ball when we go in front of the council, and I would rather see the mayor put our numbers up there as well, so he knows where it is, instead of saying, you know, the school department, you find a way to pay those numbers, that they be included, because they be included on his side when it comes to his budget, and the levy, you know, really needs to take, take that into consideration when it comes time for budgets, it really does. I don't want to read in the paper, like I read today in the, in the belly breeze, that the mayor of North Providence, he's projecting no tax increase for year number nine, I don't want to see that, you know, I mean, we have to raise the taxes in this town, as, as high as it may be, we got to raise them even when there's a, an election year coming up, you know, down the road, because we are the lowest-funded in this state, and I think it's going to continue to do this, and Mr. Pignano, he's been pinching the penny for almost nine years, 10 years, if I'm aware of, and we can't keep on pinching the penny. I'm personally, I'm not going to vote to cut any positions, let the town council decide who they want to cut this time. Thank you.
Dr. Thornton, last words.
Thank you, no, just one thought, I, I wanted to dispel one myth I heard possibly in circulation in the town around maintenance of effort, or MOE. MOE is what we get this year, we get, you know, that's your baseline, right? And there was some discussion, I think in the town, I read, with, people were concerned that the ESAA grant jobs were now part of MOE, and we're obligating the town to permanently pay for all those jobs, and that's just totally not true. So, just like IDA, Title II, Title I, those are grant-funded jobs, and the funds are not there, the jobs are not there, it's no relation to MOE whatsoever, I just wanted to kind of dispel that myth.
Thank you.
I will now open up the Florida public comment, if anyone would like to make a public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment, and I will make, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. By Mrs. Rogalski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
We are at that vote, six to zero, Mrs. Freeman having left already, and we are adjourned at 6:58.